Go ahead and gavel us in. Two gavels, is that what you need for it? I don't know. So today is August 26th to, oh, I'm sorry. It was, I mean, so today is, yeah, August 26th. This is our work session and we pass things over to staff. Director Hubbard, we're going to walk us through the first of our two items, which is the round 15 debrief.
Thank you, Chair. And just to remind you, we do have a hard stop at 4:00 PM because there's another meeting. And I hope to get through this, but I want to give enough space as I go through each of the elements of the work session to allow a commission, robust discussion with the commission if you desire. And then also give the attendees an opportunity to comment as designated. There's not really a sign up, so they'll just raise their hand, Chair. And so I want to start with the round 15 debrief, if we can go to the purpose slide. So the purpose of this is to provide, I know you have, you've seen the list of the awards, but we're going to present this in a little bit different way. The work session agenda outlines the topics that we're going to talk through. And related to those, we're going to talk about the policies that were in the grant or some policy-related actions, the outcomes of those and feedback, both from the staff perspective as well, from what we've heard from applicants and grantees. Every applicant that was not funded has been offered an opportunity to meet with staff and staff have met with all that have requested. I don't think there are any outstanding meetings that have been requested that have not been held. We will also include some potential recommendations for the commission to consider in the future. Again, this is not an opportunity to vote on anything. This is for future deliberations. And again, there will be an opportunity for comments on the slides. And there are some symbols. I just have the key to the slides, so everybody knows when we pull them up, what you're looking at. A bullet indicates the policy action that we're going to discuss. An arrow indicates that that's an outcome or feedback that we received. And then the diamonds or the little asterisk-like thing is like, indicates recommendations. So we'll go, we'll start with the summary by type. So I wanted to, we wanted to share with you the breakout by project type with the total of applications received and how they aligned with how they were recommended for funding in both the number of projects recommended for funding as well as the total. So you can see that of the, all the applications received, 28.5% were homeowner-related, 60.71 were rental and 10.71 are owner-occupied. This tracks pretty much historically to what we see. Of the funding or the projects that were recommended, 25% homeowner, 62.5 rental and 12.5 of those recommended for funding were the owner-occupied. Of the amount of funding requested, and that was a huge number, at $71 million, 30% of the requested awards were for homeowner projects, 65.75% were for rental projects and nearly 4% for owner-occupied. The ultimate recommendations leveled out to be 38% of the recommended awards for owner, homeowner projects, 60% for rental and 2% for owner-occupied rehab. That includes the small organization set aside. When you break it down into the actual awards for the small org set aside, first, let me remind everyone Metro Code requires 20% of available funding be set aside for qualifying small organizations. That totaled for this funding round a little over $7.1 million. You can see that 3.7 was actually awarded for small orgs. So we did not hit that 20%. So we didn't have, when that happens, that goes into the regular pot of funding and is not for the set aside. And so we wanted to start just with context and level set on how the actual awards shook out by project type before we dive into the debrief. And I'll pause here if there are any questions or want to discuss this information.
Thanks, continue.
First up is a discussion on the funding caps. And there was an error in the packet that you received that was changed. We raised, this year, the commission voted to raise the funding cap from $4 million to $4.5 million for the general funding pool and from $750,000 to $1 million for the small organization set aside. The outcomes and the feedback we received from that raised the investment for single projects, limited the number of awards, obviously, if your more funding is going into a project, and did incentivize grantees to ask for a maximum funding cap. This is some of the things that I'll talk about when we get into the Unified Housing Strategy, about how underwriting can help these types of situations. So the recommendation for future considerations is for the commission to revisit the funding cap, especially after hearing input from the grantees and applicants. And of course, implementing underwriting criteria, which I'll discuss later in this work session. So I'll pause for any discussion here.
All right, Chair recognizes. Can you press your button one more time? Sorry. Oh, I think you're good. Try that.
Testing, testing.
Yep, you're good.
So as someone who was strongly supportive of increasing the funding cap, I kind of saw the problems of it, especially with incentivizing everybody to do the maximum cap. And we have now way more projects than we can fund. So, Tim, I am in favor of that further discussion about lowering it back down.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jayla, you have a comment.
Okay, perfect. Okay, from your original slide, I don't know when to bring this up, but we did discuss, like, you were showing that it was 38% in the homeownership portion that went to homeownership. And maybe we can discuss down the line, what do we consider homeownership again? Because 8.8 million of that went to co-ops, which don't give anybody any, like, home equity. They can't take out HELOCs. There's no generational wealth creation forming from those things. So real, the true homeownership where they actually have the title, get a home, was only 13% of the total 35 million.
Thank you for that input, Commissioner.
Any other commissioners wish to make a comment at this point? All right, thank you. Director, please continue.
Next was brought up during comments about open contracts with unexpendable funds. There were no limits on the number of open contracts an applicant could have and funding also allowed for net new units in existing projects. So excuse me for the typo where we have projects twice. This allowed applicants with existing funding for projects with little or no progress to be eligible for funding. And this also a limited amount of a funding that could go into actual new projects. And so the recommendation from staff is to consider establishing expenditure requirements. It has been pointed out, it does make sense for there to be some open contracts, but some progress to be shown. And there are progress reports now submitted to the commission quarterly to make that evaluation, as well as limiting the investments in existing projects.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments from the commission? I guess just one quick question, Director. So as we are reviewing some of the recommendations that staff has come up with and perhaps already getting a sense of where we might want to offer input the next time that we are approached with round 16, do we have a sense of, I know that the timeline for round 16 is not yet set, but could you remind us that where the timing is that we would be discussing policy? Would this be in like the two or three-month period leading up to the release of round 16?
The stands is having a policy change one month before a release really isn't sufficient time for applicants to absorb what these policy implications might be on their potential projects. So after this work session and we hear the feedback, we'll go back and look at what a reasonable timeline would be to have a funding round open. We have heard the urgency of getting funds out the door, but we want to make sure we're using this space to really learn and incorporate the feedback that we have so we can have a solid funding round. But we want to make sure, though, that this is robustly discussed in a public setting and informed by the experiences of applications and then give sufficient time to absorb any changes and to even have some pre-application workshops.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. And I know there's going to be more discussion about that later on in the presentation, but just want to go ahead and mention that first. All right. Please continue.
I think this is one that gets us a lot. The nonprofit-for-profit partnership structure in the team capacity and experience section. We have found partnership structures vary and there's no real template for partnership agreements. And then partnerships, we did find some applications, partnerships contingent on the award of funds. So there really wasn't a partnership formed and it wasn't really solid at the time of application. We recommend having real clear requirements for partnerships. This is going to require staff to have a level of education around partnership structures. And I would say we're not lawyers, but I am, but I'm not a partnership lawyer, a business association lawyer. But also to provide that education to the commission as well as being very clear and understanding the types of partnerships that are proposed. I will talk more and get more into this and underwriting, but that is, one criteria an underwriting does look at is that partnership structure.
Questions, commissioners? Anton, you recognized?
Yep. So in this fund, when looking at the, especially the financial portion, like, there were some really, really complex partnerships that, like, there are some that hopped around across multiple states and it was hard to see who was in control of one. But I think we really do have to clarify, like, how do we make it, make sure that the nonprofit partner is driving things? And how do we define what meaningful ownership for a nonprofit is?
Appreciate that comment. Any other comments, questions from the commission? Jayla, press your button, please. You recognized?
Okay, thank you. Somebody came out, I don't remember who, but he was talking about how there might be lending options for loans down the line. Does that have anything to do with this where they would lend to even people who were just for profit?
Does anyone remember this meeting?
Unified Housing Strategy recommendation that I'll discuss in the next part of the work session. So some of this might, I will, I will say the loan and the underwriting will not be, I'm going to go ahead and just preview this, will not be in place before round 16. So we will need to have some additional discussion on what this could look like. We don't want to hold up round 16, but we will have to procure the underwriting partner and that just takes a bit of time.
Okay, I'll just hold my questions to them then.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, Director Hubbard?
Next is around financial capacity. So this was the first time that applicants were required to use the sources and use this template and that was provided by staff to clearly show the use of the Barnes Fund Grant. Then there were also requirements to demonstrate status of funding commitments. And then finally, and there has been lots of discussion, that audits were not required to be submitted with the application. The outcomes of this is that even though there was a template, not, not all applicants used the templates. And then when it came to funding commitments, there weren't clear or confirmed. Applicants were submitting funding commitments for other projects, funding commitments that were expired. And so a lot of this is just where we need to do more technical assistance, as you will see on the workshops on financial capacity requirements. When there's not an audit submitted with an application, we cannot assess the financial health of an organization at the time of that application. So it's not just, we need this as a checkmark to be able to file the legislation with council, which is required. But as we move toward more diligence in assessing financial capacity, these audits are extremely important to be submitted at the time of the application. So those are the two, so those are the recommendations are the workshops on financial capacity requirements before our next funding round and to require the audits as a threshold criteria.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments on this slide? All right.
So here's the topic du jour, the bonus points. And yes, we will go ahead and acknowledge that the bonus points for both rental and homeowner projects were very different and scaled differently than owner-occupied rehab. That was an unintentional weighting of, of the bonus points. However, this was the first initial attempt to incorporate policy priorities from the Unified Housing Strategy, which I will discuss in a bit. But when you look at what it produced, all of the rental projects but one have now have affordability terms longer than 30 years. That long-term affordability is something we've been talking about as a community for a really long time because as, when we lose income-restricted housing, it's, we have to build it back and we're running out of opportunities and money. So how can we keep it affordable for longer? We have one project that is going to be affordable for 50 years. You can also see the level of deeply affordable housing, nearly 91, at 0 to 30% of the area median income and then 105 permanent supportive housing units that will be created through the rental bonus points. So we're the homeowner and we do have, we do have the co-op in here. These will target 31 owners with the incomes below 60% AMI, with, with one of those still at the 30-year term, but with others with terms much longer than the 30 years. And then with the owner-occupied rehab, 52 households with incomes below 50% AMI will be assisted.
Thank you, Director. Want to recognize Gina?
Great to see all together like this, very helpful. And I know several of you made comments about the owner-occupied rehab. We had those same discussions in the review round. So I think everyone here is definitely paying attention to that as we move forward. I just wanted to pass that along.
Anton, you recognized?
So with the long-term affordability, so it was a scale like zero to 10 points. But I'm thinking going forward, we should either do like, okay, 30 years gets you X points, 50 years gets you Y points. And also seeing that, like, people were able to get to 50 years, why not push it permanent or permanently or 100 years? Is my thought, because some of the applications said if, like, they literally said if more years gets us more points, we could add more years. And to me, that's a wasted opportunity.
Commissioner. I would, I would say one of our recommendations around integrating policy priorities into the evaluation criteria instead of the bonus points to make this, this would be an expectation and less of this is what we hope to see, which is what bonus points kind of do. The other part, and we, I think it might have been Ms. Prince, that one of the speakers elevated this, the scoring matrix really helping to see where you scale. And we moved to more of an RFP criteria format. And I think that scoring matrix is really that guiding, like, if you, if you're within this amount of affordability, it's this point. And then I think that's a great recommendation. And then the final one is looking at those separate tracks because of how they're competing for the same pot of money, but it's not necessarily apples-to-apples projects.
Hey, Director. Jayla, you press your button, please. I'll recognize you.
Okay, perfect. Just like many people were saying about the bonus points, the fact that co-op housing is in homeownership and they're the only ones who can get that and they automatically get a padded 15 points, their projects were pretty much in the median. The second they got the 15 points, it pushed them to the higher end. So I think that that part should just be removed or co-op should have their own section, right? I don't think it should be a part of homeownership or rentals because it's not a homeownership and it's not a rental, right? It's kind of in between. So I think that they should have their own section. And with the bonus points, I think that everyone should have the opportunity to have the same exact amount of bonus points. Also with homeownership, we saw that there were the bonus points. Somebody said, okay, for 40 years, they can have it. And then the co-ops were like 99 years, right? So I was giving the co-ops the whole full 15 points and the other ones half the points or something, right? But some of the graders were just giving, if it was more than 30, 31 years, they would give them 100% of the points. So I think that that is where there's difference in even the mindset behind grading.
Any further comments or questions on this side? Anton, you recognized?
I kind of agree that the goals of homeownership and cooperative housing are so different that it does make sense to me that they'd be two different buckets.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, Director Hubbard, please continue.
The debrief is on the evaluation award process itself. The first is constricted timeline for reviewers. This was a very highly competitive round with lots of applications and the reviewers expressed, or provided a recommendation that more time should be allowed for them to really get into the, dig into the reviews. The other ones is any applicant that chooses Survey Monkey Apply or any reviewer, any commissioner that reviewed the applications know that they are not streamlined. The technology is very clunky and hard to navigate. We are excited that Metro Council did appropriate money in our budget for grant management technology. Don't know if that timing will align up with round 16. We're hoping in some form or fashion, but we did want to acknowledge that. And then the last is really the lack of clarity on the evaluation and award process itself. And what I mean by that is any government agency and even including Metro has a procurement manual. While this isn't necessarily a procurement, we do recommend the creation of an application manual separate from a grant policy. Because what this does, it lives separate than the priorities of a funding round. This is the process for how applications are released, the role of the commission in what they approve, how they're evaluated. And that, that is a static. It doesn't switch funding round to funding round. And so that's one of the recommendations that, that we're, actually, it's something that staff are going to begin working on before the next funding round.
Gina, you recognized?
Just saying that will be extremely helpful for everyone. So thank you. I wish we had that sooner, but it'll be great to have.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
The debrief or our part of the debrief. I don't know if there's any other parts that commissioners would like to elevate before you open it up, Chair, to public comments.
Thank you, Director. I'll pause for a moment to see if there's any other questions or comments before we open it up. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Again, I trust, seeing the issue with the amounts and the top-level amounts and not knowing how much to give people, the underwriting, it's like, we critically need to have underwriting. And I'm almost, I get that we need to get our money or money out the door, but I'm really hesitant to even go forward with the round until we have underwriting. So if there was any way to do a stopgap or expedited underwriting process, I would be strongly in support of it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any others? You're recognized?
Okay, perfect. And not to beat a dead horse about separation of applications, there's just certain things, like even within the application, they'll be like, okay, are you educating the people? And like I said, I only did homeownership, so I can only talk about homeownership. They say, are you educating the people about homeownership and those kind of things? And there's certain things you need to know about when you own a home versus a co-op. So they got the points as yes, but it's not technically, it's mostly not applicable, right? So some of us are grading it not applicable. Well, I was. I don't know about others. But and other people were just giving them the points simply because, you know, sure, you can say, oh, yeah, I'm going to educate somebody for down the line for homeownership. But if it's a co-op, you're not really technically doing that. But they're still getting the points simply because they're in the same application.
They were asked to provide education in context of the project that they were creating.
Okay.
Anton?
Again, re-beating the same dead horse. But like, it seems like they're just fundamentally different goals. Like, one is like building equity and one is permanent affordability. And again, they just seem like very different systems, different public benefits. And yeah, I think they should be different applications.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Gina?
I just want to say I do agree that I think longer time before we do our next round, although I'm always an advocate for getting the dollars out sooner, I do think I want to make sure we have time to have very clear guidelines of how we're scoring things, how everyone knows what's the rubric, what, how are we to score things evenly and fairly? And so I think that's worth taking the extra time to make sure we get it right.
All right, thank you, commissioners. We do want to offer an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments or questions. I do ask everyone to keep your questions or comments short as possible. I know we do a two minutes at the beginning of the time limit. I will try to adhere to that. And since we don't have a sign-up sheet, I will try my best to call you out in the order in which I see hands raised. So I don't ever know everyone's name quite by heart. I'll do my best, but I think our first one was over here. Go ahead.
Hello again. My name is Terry Skipper. I'm Executive Director of New Level CDC and I have a suggestion. My suggestion is that you separate the pools, which we all did discuss, one for rental, one for homeownership. And you have separate bonus points available for both. They're deeply affordable. Those things can work for rentals and I fully support that initiative because we do need to create long-term affordability. But again, from a legal standpoint, if someone has a 30-year mortgage, we can't do that restriction on there. So my suggestion is we do things like clarify more the educational process pre and post, that points be given if someone provides down payment assistance. You know, there are things you can do to create bonus points for homeownership that will help them be successful with homeownership. And I'd much rather see those bonus points skewed that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Terry, I think you were next, then Andrea.
Terry, we're here with Westminster Home Connection. This has been a really fascinating discussion to kind of see how you think about it and hear what happened in 15. So I had this kind of out-of-the-box thought that what if you, because I've always felt it interesting to watch the applications for the last few years. So what you're getting is you're getting what people want to do. All of that's good, but it may not be what's the biggest need. So what if you took maybe the Unified Housing Strategy? What do they say is the biggest need or whatever you think is the biggest need and put funds aside for each of those categories? And then if, and of course, you have all the projects in the category would have to meet the threshold of being a good project. But instead of letting it be what people want to do, let it be what the community needs.
Thank you, Terry. I think Andrea had you up next and Eddie after that.
Hi, Andrea Prince, CEO of Rebuilding Together Nashville. I just made a quick notes on some of the areas. One, thinking about, talking about open contracts and how that factors into scoring. What, what we do is what Barnes Funds allows us to do is plan year over year. And also thinking through, if there's longer timelines with the application process, means like, we're going to have to put in another request before potentially our other contracts up. And what that allows us to do is continual operation. Because again, as like owner-occupied rehab, we're not funding just one project. Like, we're funding our work that we do year-round. So we are continually, you know, doing, we're repairing homes every day. We did 55 projects last year. That's a home a week we're closing. So we are, you know, continually working. Also, you know, to the piece around like the financial capacity requirements, again, with, you know, this is our core program that we with, you know, this is our core program that we typically ask for Barnes funding for year over year, and that funds our core program. So it's not like a singular project that we are asking for Barnes funds. It's different homes. But of course, like that is kind of a little bit different than having a capital stack for an individual project. Looking at, you know, we're talking about too, like the, you know, losing affordable housing and income restriction. I mean, we're doing home repairs. We are keeping homes affordable. We had planned to do 85 units with round 15, and now that's 85 units that aren't being preserved, and we're losing those affordable housing units potentially. We've, you know, preserved $40 million of home value. That's $40 million of affordable housing here in Nashville that we've been able to preserve. So even if it's not a 99-year affordability, we're allowing families to build generational wealth, and we're preserving home values here for affordable housing that already exist. And then also just curious to hear more about the RFP format that you mentioned. So highlighted that, thanks.
Thank you. Got, do you have a question? All right, Eddie, you go, and Andy after that.
All right, I'm Eddie Latimer with Affordable Housing Resources. I just have a basic question. I was trying to figure what details to cover, and I just decided this was it. What is your purpose as a commission? I mean, it's shifted with that last round. It has definitely shifted than the purpose of this commission 15 grant rounds ago. And the issue is, is that you all are the city's only access, only gift to us to help us develop affordable housing. This is for profits and nonprofits. This is for special needs. This is for people working hourly, and this is for people on lower salaries. You all are the city's only tool to us. Bill Barnes was a real personal friend. He helped me grow spiritually. He helped me grow professionally. But one thing Bill really gave to me is he made sure I knew that we were not about housing, but that we were about the people, 40% of Nashville's population, who have, who struggled to live here and not live elsewhere, who struggle to stay in the home versus have to go into a nursing home, which they can't afford. Is he made me see that what we're really about is people. And I wish that when you all see us behind this table, that you would not see us as 25 agencies. We're really about agency, doors to helping people, and that's all we do this for. And I really appreciate that. And so my point is, is that I wish that you all would take some time, and I really appreciate your slides. I think that was a great exercise for me to see. I think it really got everybody thinking on the track of this last round, things that we could look at. I really think that we just really need to determine what can we do to make it possible for the special needs and for Nashville's desperate working class, 40% of the population to live here and not have to do long commutes or not have to be put in group homes. That's really where we're all together. And so when you do this, I do not think the Barnes Fund was created that so people could get, win so many grant dollars that they barely have to leverage a bank for a nickel. I do not think the Barnes Fund was committed that you could vary the cost of a three-bedroom home by $100,000, whereas in the higher cost was chosen. We just, y'all need to figure out how to maximize this resource that has actually now been cut in half because we're going to need, we had 70 million last time. You're going to get that again, and you're only going to have half the resources. But I really thank you all for what you do. Jenna, thank you very much for what you do. You've been a great resource and you've been a president and you've been through the, all the bad, good and bad of it, so thank you for that. And I just, I'm not trying to be moralistic. I'm just trying to help us get back to what is our purpose, all of us. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, Eddie. All right, real quick, Anton?
I guess responding to the, responding to the rehab discussions from Angie and Terry, I do agree that it does seem like the cheapest thing for a bucket.
Cheapest way to preserve housing. And I see the issue of we're spending such a small proportion of our money in something that has the most impact, and these organizations, like we could have built those 80 units if we'd leveraged them differently. So like I think as we come up with public benefit and what to prioritize, I'd like to think about how we can make sure we're keeping our rehab at the capacity that our partner organizations can do these rehabs.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I have Andy up next, and then let's see, we'll go from this side to this side moving over. Okay.
Oh, wait, was it already on? It was already on. Andy Zoo with MFX Ventures. It's hard to follow Eddie after that, but I think it's, this goes in line with what everyone's saying. I think the, at the end of the day, we want as a community, the best projects that serve the most people to be the projects that are funded. And I think one of the ways to do that is being talked about among people is you divide out all the different types of funding and not make them all compete against one another because for then, I've mentioned this several times, and I haven't even worked on these projects, but the owner-occupied rehabs, and they just get cut out when they're in the bucket with everyone else. So if you have $16 million, you put $5 million, $6 million to rentals, $5 million to homeownership, $2 millions to co-ops, you separate them out, $1 million to owner-occupied rehab, or $2 or $3 million to owner, however you want to divide that out. And you try to prioritize within each of these buckets, the best project for this type of service that you're trying to do as opposed to randomly per-scoring things getting shaken out in the wash. The, and I do want to, I actually appreciate Jayla's point about the cooperative, because we work on all sorts of projects, traditional rentals, light tech rentals, affordable rentals, homeownership, and then these cooperatives. I'm probably the only one who's working in this room on these cooperatives, and they are very different, to your point. This is about, these cooperatives are about providing an alternative to renting that's better than renting, that you have stability, that you have long-term, permanent affordability. That's why we have, we're the only projects for 99-year affordability. It is at odds with homeownership trying to build wealth, which is a good thing. We want to encourage projects that do that for people. But it seems to me that if you're looking at all these priorities, you, the goal, if I'm a policymaker, is to make the best project for each different type of these funding mechanisms that I can and competing them against each other rather against all the pool all at once. And then you get kind of, the outcomes end up being maybe not what you were looking for. So that's why I think going through this, and I'm sure Angie's going to talk more about the underwriting, I would also add just briefly to the unit dollar per max. It is very much incentivized for developers to ask for the max. That is absolutely incentive. I was one of the advocates for a higher amount, but I originally asked for it to be based on by unit. I think it's, it was previously kind of a deterrent to bigger projects. I think it should still be by unit. And also, if you could incorporate some sort of matrix where if you're doing permanent supportive housing, you need way more funding than a 60% or an 80% AMI unit, right? And so that's where maybe a permanent supportive housing unit gets a higher dollar amount per unit as a maximum. Then you solve a lot of these underwriting questions without needing to bring on your underwriter yet if you're not ready for it. That way, you don't end up having deals that don't make sense where people inflate the costs and just in order to get the maximum grant fund, which is happening right now in your current policy prescriptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
I do agree with the importance of the matrix, especially if we're not going to have underwriting yet. The matrix could be something we could develop quickly and have it out in time for round 16.
Keep that in consideration. Thank you, Commissioner. Our, there you are. All right.
Good afternoon. Reed Lauer with Holiday Ventures. It's good to see you all. Really only have four specific recommendations. The first being, it was already mentioned, but the scoring matrix, that's really a helpful way for the development community to be able to align with the Barnes Fund mission and really what you all set out, what you all want. If you provide the scoring, then we can hit the target, and ultimately, we're creating what you all want to see. So that would be very helpful. Number two would be during the review, specifically the external review, having some sort of dialogue process within, within that review where if there's any outliers on the scoring, those, those, you know, any questions that might be out there, but isn't, there isn't currently an outlet, having some sort of dialogue around the scoring on the review process to basically address any outliers would be also very helpful. And then number three, just more consistency in the timing of the rounds, the funds. We would advocate for two rounds per year. Currently, it's, it's hard to get land under contract with not knowing when Barnes funding is going to be available. So I think that would help ultimately deliver more affordable units in the community. And then lastly, number four, this is, I think, could help, it's related to the cap conversation, but basically looking at the Barnes awards per unit, so funding per unit, Barnes funds per unit. I think that would be helpful to see, as a way to see how far the Barnes funds are being stretched and how many units are ultimately being delivered. Thank you.
Josh, you up next? And then Lucille?
Thank you, everyone, for your time. My name's Josh Hasten with LDG Development. We're a large multifamily developer across the country. I completely agree with a lot of the things that have been said. I know we don't have underwriting criteria yet or the capabilities, but strongly recommend that as soon as it's possible. As that, as points have been made, all these different deals have different structures, different horizons, different criteria for which they create and solve the goals that they're supposed to solve. And so having an understanding of how those deals should be underwritten safely so that there's not issues in year 99 or issues in year 50 or issues whenever, to make sure that you're creating, you're addressing an issue now, but also not creating an issue down the line too. So there's a careful balance with that. Regarding the points, I again, I agree with how things were said in terms of providing more clarity about how points are given. I might recommend potentially having scores that are more objective in the sense that there's not a gradient. You either get points or you don't. If you get, if you satisfy certain criteria, and that helps remove some of the potential subjectivity with the scoring. I would also agree with Reed's comment about dialogue and work cure period. I know when with other funding agencies, some, they may ask questions from the applicant about, hey, what does you mean here? And that would provide an opportunity for developers to provide context so that you could provide some sort of yes, no on that point category. Regarding the various set-asides for the different types of, whether it's a rehab or owner-occupied or rental or homeownership, all those are great things and kind of leading to what Eddie was mentioning. It's just a careful balance of understanding what your guys' priorities are, and I think that also just might be an understanding of aligning your priorities with what the UHS is recommending. So it's understanding what are those smart goals of, we need to produce, someone mentioned 10,000 PSH units in the next 10 years. If that's the goal, then what does this priority, do we need to produce 100 PSH units every year for the next 10 years? So just understanding that when you're crafting these policies so that you can back in into the goals and create the checkmarks along the way. So again, just understanding those priorities. Also, there was a comment about providing additional time to understand what those goals would be. Again, a lot of these other deals are trying to stack funding throughout the process. So it's understanding that what is the reasonability of potentially receiving a Barnes Fund at this time so that you can then also apply for tax credits or home funds or whatever to create and solve for the gaps in your deal. So if there's consistency in a known timeline, as well as potentially knowing, hey, in round one of next year, we're going to be able to know what the priority is of the Barnes Fund so we can structure and work with landowners to provide and set up our land contracts in such a way that we can achieve those goals along with the goals of Metro. So it's just understanding what those goals are well in advance so that the development community can provide and meet those goals. And again, I just really appreciate all your guys' time and how you're just loving the community well. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Lucille's up next?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the point that Angie made about consideration for in the future, limiting investments in existing projects. And what I would like to ask is that we give careful consideration to what is an existing project. And so I'm going to speak to that from the standpoint of the work that Habitat does, which is to take a large piece of property, divide it into lots, of course, build homes and sell them to the homeowners. We have found an efficiency in larger pieces of property. So we just finished, for example, with the help of Barnes Fund, round a 58-unit community subdivision, and now we're working on one that is 26 homes. And the cost per lot, when you look at the 58, is less than it is on the 26 because of, you know, just economies of scale and certain fixed costs that have to be spread. And so when we look at the definition of existing projects, I would like to think through the opportunity to continue to use phases and those sorts of things. Not only would it help from a standpoint of the potential cost per unit for the land development, making that more competitive, but it also would align with the rest of the capital stacks that often come out annually. And so you could stack one phase, stack a second phase, stack a third phase, and make it more economical. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Member Chair and members of the committee. I'm Steve Ritter, R-E-I-T-E-R for the record. First of all, I just want to go out there and say when, I think when an applicant puts forward their application that, and you award the money, that's the deal. You don't amend it. That's the deal. Either you perform that or you reallocate, or they can go to chance record. But you just can't have this where people just come in here, they get awarded money and say, well, we changed the scope, we've changed this, we've changed that. We don't do that. You got to stop that. The other thing I've heard before, I think I've heard, the mission here is the missing middle. Well, what about special needs? What is that? You need to go out there and redefine your mission, what you're really here for. I think Eddie Latimer tried to bring that out, and I think other speakers did the same thing. I think that's really important. You need to focus on that. On the scoring, how many people you serve or how many units are there? I think you should focus on square footage. I think that's, that goes out there and puts everybody in an equal pot. Otherwise, it gets a little more confusing. So I think you need to do some work on that. With the Unified Housing Strategy, I have a problem with that, and that is, it's a strategy. It's not a plan. When I look at a plan, it has milestones. It says, this is what we want to do. This is the timeframe we want to do it. The community wants to know what you're doing, and actually, the development community wants to know what you're looking for. wants to know what you're looking for. If you just put a bunch of strategies out there, it just doesn't mean anything, I'm sorry. You have to come up with a plan and tell the community, this is what we're here for and what we're going to do, and you're not doing that. I'm sorry, you're just not. You have to go out there and do that. I don't know if it requires some sort of changes in the authorization for this group here, or whatever else, but you've got to focus on what you're supposed to be here for, because right now, I'm confused. I don't know what you're doing, and as a community member, I need to know that. And I think the rest of the community is entitled to know what this group is doing and what the development community wants to know. They want to know certain things, what you're looking for. Now, if you just do one round and say, hey, we're doing this here, and the next round we're doing that there, but when you're combining everything together, because there, people talked about, well, we have to get land, we have to, our land costs are so much, we have to go out, we have to anticipate. You just can't drop something out there willy-nilly and just say, oh, by the way, here's the round. I mean, they've got a plan too. And so you have to tell people, this is where, we're gonna do round one at this timeframe, and we're gonna do round two at that timeframe. I don't care if it's spring, fall, whatever else, but just tell the community what you want to do, because this is not the way. I'm just an observer here today, but this is not the way business should be done. You can do better, and you must do better. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time.
Is the public comment period still open? Are there any other members of the public here today who wish to make a comments or question?
Mick Nelson, Nelson Community Partners. I think, just a couple points on the award maximums and the unit counts, I just want to echo a lot of what was already said. We really need to think about efficiency. When I look at the Unified Housing Strategy, I come away with one major takeaway. We need 9,000 units a year, and about a quarter of them need to be affordable. So this is our main source of affordable housing in the city, so thinking about efficiency of Barnes Funds is really important. So I think that that can be done. So I think that the maximum award level should be based on the total Barnes Award for that particular year. We have a down year this year, we hope, Councilmember Allen, we hope that next year, we get back up to the Unified Housing Strategy recommendation levels of at least $30 million a year, and maybe the maximum award amount should be, should sit accordian based on the total amount of Barnes Funds available. Then I think you can evaluate based on AMI levels that are being targeted, as well as dollars per unit, maybe even to Steve's point, you know, square footage or bedroom counts, and they're all things taken into account, but I do think there's a way that addresses this underwriting gap that may feel exist in the room, that being efficient with those dollars per unit and readiness to proceed will be a really good way to get doing that. So, and I think from the advocacy perspective, knowing that Barnes is gonna generate a whole bunch of either new units, or stopping the leaky bucket of units falling out of affordability is gonna make our job, making sure that you guys have as many resources that you can have to deploy to serve this crisis that our city's facing. So just all about efficiency here, and yeah, I think the buckets are probably a great idea to deploy around with. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Mick. Are there any others wishing to make a public comment period? All right, we appreciate everyone's inputs. Taking some notes, and we will have notes also available with our recording. We are now just looking at our time. We are at 3:47. Director Hubbard, I know we wanted to move into the UHS recommendations. Do we want to go ahead and start that, knowing that we need to adjourn in about 12 minutes?
Chair, I'll defer to you and the commissioners. But before time runs out and we adjourn, we heard a lot today, and I think a lot of follow-ups, so Chair, we'll follow with you and each commissioner here for, obviously, if we even start the UHS, we won't get probably through the first bullet, but, so we'll continue this work session conversation next month, but if there's any other follow-up items that we've heard today that you would go ahead and like to discuss, we would like to have this open dialogue as we're working toward around 16, policy and then beyond, so we will definitely be following up. So Chair, I'll defer to you and to the commission on what you would like to do with the next part of the work session.
Thank you, Director Hubbard. You know, I think that with 10 minutes left, it may be best for us to pause, and I know we've got a lot to think about and a lot that we've noticed based on the feedback provided by staff, as well as the feedback provided by the audience, and I think it may be best for us to, unless anyone has a strong objection, to go ahead and pause with our, with our action, with our presentations, and push the full UHS recommendations portion to our next September meeting. With that being said, I will turn it back over to the commission to see if there's anyone else who wants to make a comment before we adjourn, went into anything that was said Anton, you're recognized.
So with the matrix idea, I guess, so would we have staff come up with a preliminary, like, matrix that would have, like, bedroom count allocation with cutaways or bonuses for permanent supportive housing and long-term affordability, or how would we proceed?
I would think that staff, I would let them offer a response, but I think that whatever, and we've heard a number of different ideas, both from the staff recommendation, as well as from members of the public, I think that whatever we would ask them to explore, they would be willing to try to give us a sense of what that might look like, and then we can figure out how the folks who are evaluating might respond to that. But Director Hubbard, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
I was actually thinking the same thing that Commissioner was raising, of what can staff prepare and bring back for further consideration, so if that is a request of the commission, or a commissioner of what you would like to see, that we can start the dialogue, because once things get on paper, sometimes then we need to look at it and talk through it more than one time. So we are happy to follow up with you, to get what you're thinking down on paper, and have that as part of the next work session.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Gina, you're recognized.
I mostly just want to say thank you to everybody. I know that you put a lot of time and effort into all of these, and things don't always go as smoothly as you like, but we appreciate the feedback. We're here to listen and make sure we get that into the next round and keep getting better with each one. So just want to say thank you. It's been almost 10 years of sitting in here, and I consider that a privilege to be here, so I look forward to seeing you all in the audience.
Anything else, Director?
I was just asking, get a picture of Gina with her certificate.
All right. Yeah, we look forward to the pictures and all the tagging of that picture on the, around the social media sensations. All right. That being said, we have now reached about the end of our time. Appreciate everyone's patience. I look forward to seeing many of you back next month, where we'll go through our regular business, and then go into our work session focused on the UHS recommendations. So in the meantime, please remember that at the beginning of our public comment period, we encourage anyone and everyone to offer any feedback, questions, and I believe staff is always welcome to any of your comments or feedback as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to adjourn this meeting. Promotion? Jayla, is there a second?
Second.
Anton, all is in favor? All right, we are adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.